She's a Mexico.
Good evening and welcome to Monday, the 22nd. The Committee of the Whole and our topic tonight is the Renton Connector Concept Update. I believe Ruth is joining us virtually. So Mr. Martin Pustuka, please take it away.
Thank you, Council President O'Halloran. Members of the council, I'd like to introduce Keith Woolley, who's our project manager in Transportation, and he will be provide you the update on the Renton Connector and the South Seventh Street Corridor Improvement Project. Keith?
Thank you.
And if I may interrupt, Keith, you did a really, really good job at the South Renton Neighborhood Presentation. Very well received.
By going to that neighborhood, thank you, to the neighborhood meetings. Thank you. So, yes, so we're going to update Committee of the Whole on Renton Connector and the South Seventh Project as well. The Renton Connector is envisioned as a non-motorized, multi-use trail along Burnet Avenue, the west side between South Second and South Fifth Street, kind of as shown in the drawing there with the north to the left. And this project came out of the 2018 study, the Renton Downtown Civic Core Vision and Action Plan. And in fact, the picture on the left is envisioned as the Renton Connector. What does it connect? Regional trails, downtown parks, really a north-south, non-motorized pedestrian and wheeled connection for more than three blocks, but this project is for three blocks. It's envisioned to energize, catalyze, and activate downtown. So this is a conceptual view from the 2018 study. And we're advancing it now. So Transportation, Public Works got a one and a half million dollar federal grant, along with some of our local funds, to go forward with the design of this project. Just, okay, ignore it.
I'm through it.
Wasn't really hearing it. But so our designer is MIG, and that is the same, actually, designer that did this 2018 study. So we have some continuity there. And so we began design. And one of the first things that we did is wanted to do some focus groups to further the concept from the study. And so in last fall, we met with Chamber, Downtown Partnership, Cascade Bicycle Club, South Renton Neighborhood. And these are notes from MIG. They can take notes if north is to the left or north is to the right. So that's why I put that picture in there. But so after we did these focus groups, we now have two concepts that we want to take to the public. And that's really why we came here tonight, just to inform you that we intend to take this concept to the public on June 6th. And what initially started as how does the Renton Connector meet with the public, became a collaborative effort with Public Works, CED, and Parks and Rec in terms of going to the pavilion at the farmer's market on June 6th and having an overall open house that really is a five-year update on that 2018 plan. So this is the outreach that's going on in social media right now. The Renton Connector Project, Arts and Culture Space, King County will come with the Lakes and Sound, CED's Downtown Wayfinding, and Pavilion Market and Downtown Streetscape. So there's a lot going to be presented on June 6th from 3:00 to 7:00. And since it's the opening of the farmer's market, we expect a lot of the public to come through. We're really trying to get them to come through. This little scavenger hunt thing that you see there. So again, that's really why we wanted to tell you about the Renton Connector tonight. And so the next, I think, 13 slides or so are the boards that we're going to show on June 6th. Not expecting you to digest all of this, but I wanted to get it in your packet. They're all in drafts, but basically we'll be showing the public, you know, how it started in 2018, what's its vision, its background, its purpose of the Renton Connector, even why it's called the Renton Connector, some of the feedback we've gotten so far. And then basically, it's an easy project to call the North Block, the Middle Block, and the South Block. In each block, we have two concepts that show this Renton Connector, again, this multimodal trail. For the North Block, it's showing that we take the south, one of the southbound lanes. And so we're coordinating that with the move of the Transit Center with King County Metro. There's two concepts. One is with a median, one is without. The Middle Block is really a block that we've gotten a lot of input, that people look and can't figure out, how do I get from here to there? It's not obvious how to walk through this area. And so that's another one of the reasons this Renton Connector is coming through. Impacts to the city parking lot in the Middle Block. And then in the South Block, impacts to the city public parking lot as well, with the options in the Southern Block dealing more with how much parking remains after we implement the Renton Connector. And we are working with BNSF regarding crossing the railroad tracks. And then some of these slides, the Renton Connector, really what I've heard and what as a team we've heard is, in the drawings in 2018, it looks like an asphalt cycle track with, you know, green pavement. What we're really hearing from people is they picture more of a promenade, more of a multimodal, but for everybody on walking, you know, heels and wheels. And so we're going to work with our designer to really enhance, make it not look like a cycle track, to be honest with you. And it's more of a, I call it a promenade, but we'll be talking to the public. We will adhere as much as we can to the downtown streetscape standards. And we're just getting input on lighting and landscape. So all of those aspects are related to the Public Works project. And in the 2018 plan, it also really emphasized almost an art walk. And so this is where we're working closely with CED. And we have this identified as a future opportunity. Although CED has just gone out with an Arts and Culture Master Plan. And part of the reason CED is doing that is to have one of the subtasks in that be focused on the art in the Renton Connector. So I should point out, from Public Works, we have funding for design, but not for construction. That is not uncommon for Public Works projects, as we need to kind of get closer through design before we can identify construction funding. But working together with John Cullum and Jesse Kotarsky and CED, they're also moving forward with how to fund, you know, the art aspect of this project. Because we do have to be careful. You want to show people what is possible, but we also don't want to promise something that's not yet funded. So it's kind of a hand in hand. But we do want to shoot for the whole project that was identified in the 2018 plan. So similarly, this is called Activation, where we're working with the Parks and Rec Department and working with Erica Schmidt. She has identified, I think she called it a budget line item, a year or two from now, for looking at the Burnet Linear Park and expanding it to the north with this Renton Connector. And then also, John Cullum has a Heart Block.
Recording in progress.
Civic Core Heart Block Master Plan. And the Heart Block is also identified in that 2018 plan of how to enhance the block that is around the Transit Center and the piazza and the pavilion. So again, just wanted you to be aware and know what's being presented at the farmer's market open house. And then along with it, I call this my cousin project. This is the South Seventh Project. Separate project, but if you were biking or walking, it takes you out the south end of the Burnet Linear Park and then along South Seventh, all the way to the western city limits. And this project is technically a separate project that we're, the goal is to develop this corridor as a key east-west bicycle route. The reason I bring this one up is because we intend to put a trail on the eastern segment, as shown with the yellow at the top of the map there. And then west of Shattuck, it's more enhanced bicycle markings on the street. And both, the whole corridor, we're not envisioning any right-of-way acquisition. And construction is only on the eastern segment there. And down near Walmart, we also, the grant identifies replacing the mid-block crosswalk. So this project does have, actually, let me go back here, sorry. So this project has a federal grant and a sound transit grant. The federal grant is a million and a half. The sound transit grant is a million. And it is for both design and construction, with construction identified for summer, fall of next year. So it's actually ahead of the Renton Connector in terms of funding and construction. And so we will be taking that also on June 6th to the farmer's market. And as Councilmember O'Halloran mentioned, I was just at the South Renton Neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, because this really affects the South Renton Neighborhood, especially the block between Shattuck and Talbot or the Brown Bear Car Wash, because we're going to be putting this trail along the north side. And we have identified potential intersection improvements. Talbot Road, of course, is a really odd intersection. And we're even having, we have a different designer, the Transpo Group, and they're going to be looking at different options with the intent to make that trail as safe as possible. So, you know, our intent is not to make this a freeway or for trucks or anything. We're really trying to identify how this trail can be as safe as possible. And some of the concepts shown there include a right-out-only southbound from Smithers and Morris. And we have talked to all of the neighbors along this corridor. And a lot of them actually really like that idea. But this is really just draft, again, to show people, show the public. So that's really what I wanted to get out there and then allow you the opportunity to ask us about these questions. And I couldn't resist saying thank you from a collection of your city employees that rode their bike to work on Bike to Work Day last week. So. Anything that I missed that you, otherwise certainly Q and A, or really, open invitation to come to the June 6th open house? John Cullum wanted to be here with me, but he's, I think he's online listening. He has been the one who's really been organizing this open house. We're hoping it's a great success. Every time we've done an open house at the farmer's market, we get lots of public in, but lots, more than you would get doing it any other time. So, thank you.
My first question is, what's your timeframe for this? What's the goal of having this started or completed or?
So the easy one is South Seventh. We want to be under construction at the end of next year. But that's the Renton Connector is the more involved project. Because we only have design money right now, we are going slower and want to have a design in about 12 months from now. And something that maybe in about 12 to 16 months from now, we can go seek construction funding for. The construction is one, two, or three blocks at a time. So there's a thought that maybe we construct the middle block first, so then people can see how they can get from here to there. And it also mitigates some of the construction impacts and parking at the south. And also it emphasizes that north-south connectivity to the underutilized parking garage to the north. And so that is the rough timing. So I would say in another year or two, we hope to identify funding and start competing for possible grant funding to build the modal part of it, meaning the Public Works. We'll, I call it a blank slate in that when we build the Renton Connector from the Public Works side, we will install all the infrastructure needed should art become, come down the road. And we'll work with CED to make sure we put that in the proper locations so that if an artist comes forward, similar to the loop structure that was built at Second and Main, that was my project a few years ago, and we made sure that we had power to it under there. So I don't know if that answers your question, but okay.
Let's start at the end and work this way.
All right.
Thank you. Everything looks good. I'm curious, on page 20, it looks like that's going to be an activity, I guess, at the public meeting. But can you explain what they're going to do with that? Or are there some pieces here that we don't see? Or are they going to have to just kind of be artists and do their own thing with this?
So it's actually all the slides from like slide, yeah, thank you, Mark, nine through 14, where they'll kind of cut, they might choose.
The things they like, the pictures they like.
Yeah. Literally cut it out or paste it on there, tape it on there. It's going to be kind of a board with about probably eight and a half by 11 sheets. And they can kind of tape up different aspects, cut out what they like and what they don't. You know, maybe some would cut out, you know, a chess table and say, oh, I want that there, you know? So we're just looking for.
It doesn't have to be contiguous in any way. It's just, I like that aspect. I like that aspect.
Like that aspect.
Okay.
I like this tree, keep it, or I don't like this tree, cut it down. And John Cullum with CED is making it a scavenger hunt so that if you do the activity at each of the projects, then you turn your thing in and you get, you know, entered in for a prize or something. So for ours, they actually, actually have to tape something together to get a little stamp, I think. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Council President. And thank you, Keith, for your presentation. Very informative. I have two questions. If I may, the first one is, again, thank you for meeting with the veterans a few months ago. And I know that you've spoken to them. And in terms of the parking spaces during this design phase, and you may not have the answer right now, and that's totally fine. But is it still in the design that potentially from 84 parking spaces, we will only end up with 40? If you can kind of update us on that.
According to the South Block, and the Renton Connector in the 2018 plan is envisioned, is going, you know, currently this is full parking of approximately 82 spots, as Councilmember Vaughn mentioned. And the plan is to utilize some, and the sum is undefined, of that parking for the Renton Connector. And so right now, really, the options we have there is either 34 spaces in that option versus 21 spaces in that option. And we're looking to hear from the public. Again, we're given A and B, but obviously we're also morphing. So in the more parking option, we are showing, you know, ADA parking for both up near the VFW and then also down at the south end for the Burnet Linear Park, where the kids play, and maintaining the on-street parking on the east and western side. But yes, right now, the two options we're showing, it's kind of a little bit more, a little bit less, but it is a reduction from 82 down to 34 or 21, all depending. And I know we met with the VFW, that's one of their concerns. I also met with the Red House next door. Intentionally met with those two because they didn't show up to our business outreach. And they're the two businesses that we really felt we needed to hear from. And I don't want to put words in their mouths, but the Red House was kind of all for less parking. The VFW really said they needed all the parking that's out there. And as when I met with Councilmember Vaughn and the VFW, I pointed out that it is public parking. Otherwise, we wouldn't even have that discussion with them. So it's not their parking, it's public parking. And the neighborhood has really indicated they would love to see, from the 2018 study, I'll call it a better, I shouldn't say better use, because you might think the VFW, I think, would say the parking is the better use. But other entities, different, you know, use less for automobiles and more for non-motorized and activity and enhancement. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's what we're presenting.
I think also, Keith, to point out, the red markings on there show activity spaces, whether it be art or whether it be active program space that recreation would have. So those things have been considered into that. There have been allowances made for that. So that's why you can see, well, why can't we just get rid of some of this red space? Well, it is, it comes at a trade-off. And that's really part of what the input we're looking for.
I didn't see this one coming, but interestingly, one of the things that really came out of all of this outreach is people really would love to see a dog park amenity in the downtown. You see so many dogs. And I know we have a regional dog park out at the old Brick Factory, sorry, Carco. But we just heard a lot of input that so many dogs and maybe something like that closer to the downtown Heart Block. So working with Parks and Rec on that, that's just, you know, an option. I think it's shown in one of our slides. And we're going to seek input on that when we're out there June 6th. So, yeah.
Anybody else before Kim goes again? Yeah, please.
All right, I guess. Thank you, Madam Chair. Keith, great presentation. Appreciate it. All the details looked at on here. I have a couple of questions, so I'll just go with my first one, and then we'll get a chance to go back around, maybe. So the one thing I noticed with at least the two southern portions, on the north one, it's aligned where it's over to the side, and it kind of reduces a few more pedestrian-vehicle conflicts, whereas in the other two, it seems to run more. And it seems like there's more crossings where vehicles are going to go across. Did the design look at potentially shifting that over to one side or the other so that we could reduce that extra opportunity for vehicle pedestrian? There's a couple of spots where they have to cross into parking to do that.
Yeah. So one of the first things that also rose to the top was the two American sycamore trees, the really large trees. And there wasn't much support for bringing them down. How about, should I just say it that way? And so in actuality, we really should separate this. And you can have the south block, and you can take cars around the north side of those trees or the south side of the trees. And also in terms of where you bring the cars through from South Fourth Street, we're going on the current layout, but we have a meeting scheduled with BNSF in about a month. It's not easy to get them, but we really want BNSF to come on-site. We don't want someone from Texas telling us what to do without standing there with us. But this is kind of what we believe BNSF is going to tell us that we can do. There was consideration of matching the south block to the middle block. I don't know if that's what you're referring to in terms of putting all of the lanes of traffic on the eastern side. And then, but then you end up with this park in front of people's front yards, and they can't get to their driveways. And so we kept the lanes of traffic on the very eastern and western and put the connector in the middle. And the railroad kind of acts as a boundary. So we kind of wanted this block to really flow into the blocks between South Fifth and South Seventh. And north of the railroad, we stick with what was redesigned in around 1997, I think, where we've aligned all the lanes of traffic on the eastern side. I don't know if that answered your question.
More or less, yeah. I was more looking at the middle, the middle block, I think, more than the south one. The driveways make sense. If you're maintaining access, that you wouldn't take that away. Whereas we have that parking lot. And if it's still business access too, I'm just looking for opportunities where we can reduce crossings for pedestrians, because that has an impact on safety for me.
Yeah. Is my showing on your screen? But you're talking about the middle block.
Mostly that one, yeah.
Yeah. So one consideration was bringing, not having that driveway where it currently is. Now, I need it, I should have a white arrow on there, that it's, you only come in from Burnett and you only go out on the South Fourth. So there's, that's why it says draft there. That is a crossing, but that would be an in on the parking lot, and then it's an out. So that's a, that is a redesign of how you access this parking. There was thought of maybe coming in off of South Third, but, you know, we just put the clock tower back. Why would, so, but it's all, again, this, I can't even say the project is a 10% design, really, but we want the input to come in, and then we'll take the design. And if, yes, we want to minimize the crossings, the conflicts between the Renton Connector and vehicles. So.
Anybody else?
Hey, Madam Chair. It's a quick follow-up, going back to Councilmember Van's question about the parking lots. I'm just curious, because I would have the same question, but overall, I'm curious. Do we have an idea of, at any one point in time, or maybe the maximum point in time, what percentage of that Burnett Linear Park down there is actually used? I know whenever I drive by, I mean, there's plenty, but I'm not all there. I'm not there all the time. So do we kind of know exactly what percentage of it is typically?
Yes. I don't have it right with me, but we have tried to focus on that at the first six months here of design. We did a parking study where we had the consultant go out a couple of times and take down parking lot usage first. And it was not just this parking lot, it was the middle block. You know, the parking garage just totally overwhelms all the others. So you kind of almost have to take that out in terms of utilization, because it might be at 5% or 10%. On-street parking. We also, I learned that our transportation maintenance folks have a camera that can take a picture every hour. So we did that for a week. We took a picture of this parking lot every hour for a week, just to see what happens on different evenings and weekends. And then also, it's, there is some personal observation that our team is doing. But there's also input coming in from the residents. I will answer your question eventually, that it's hard to put a number to this, but there's the perception that the apartment users are using the parking lots in the middle and southern block rather than paying to park under their buildings. And there is, I think, some validation behind that. And then, of course, you know, we also have people that are doing long-term parking with RVs and the like there. But 20 to 25%, and then maximum utilization up to, you know, 95%, maybe twice a month, two or three times a month. But I guess, don't, I mean, I'm on record, but I would like to provide you with like the parking study. Give us some of that information. Yeah.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just kind of piggyback on Councilmember Albersen. I know for a fact that with the VFW, they have their Wednesday community dinner. They're, they're open basically 2:00 to 8:00, roughly that timeframe in the evening. And then, of course, that's Wednesday. There is events on Friday, Saturday as well. So I think the usage there, depending on which week you came in. But certainly, I think I would love to have the data, information. I know it's not a privately owned parking spaces, but we are talking about seniors, elders as well, right? The situation of our veterans. And of course, communion as well. But my question is, as far as the lightening and just having lights, what is kind of, because I've heard concerns from community as far as the, how dark it is in terms of that. So can you kind of give me some information in terms of that?
Yes. So because in this picture on the middle right there is what we call our lower light that we installed on our Wells and Williams project. The intent would be to fully illuminate the Renton Connector, at least with what we call this pedestrian-level lighting. It's a 14 to 16 feet high. And then similarly, on the Wells Williams project at the railroad tracks, you'll see a higher luminaire that we install at the intersections. So we would make sure that the intersections of Burnett and Second, Third, Fourth, and Fifth were fully illuminated with those poles. And we would also do some additional looking at Burnett Avenue. There's a fairly good chance that we're going to have to upgrade the signals at Second, Third, and Fourth. And, and. the signals at Second, Third, and Fourth. And, and that would include lighting for the whole intersections. They are lit right now as well, though. And then there is also a project in front of the Red House, the VFW on Burnett Avenue, on the east side by CED that is replacing the sidewalk there, and they are installing lighting. So certainly, we would envision much better illumination. And we want, we want that to be used to transit, you know, north and south on these three blocks. So, you know, if, I mean, that's what we hear from, like, the VFW is why people don't want to walk from the parking, the city center parking garage, because it's not very evident and doesn't feel safe. So we want to make this feel like, oh, that is definitely a nice place to walk, day or night, you know. So, yeah.
So I have a suggestion for possibly naming this, other than the connector, would be La Pasarela, which is, La Pasarela, which means the walkway in Spanish.
Fancy.
It's L.A.P.A.S.A.R.E.L.A.
Noted. I, I grew up in California where there's all kinds of El Camino Reales. Every town has one.
All right, is there any, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have another question as we're, as I've talked to community, and I know there's probably no space here. I'm talking about parking spaces, and now I'm going to talk about urban farm, or there's a possibility through the, the landscape that we're talking about green space, plotter to some sort. Is that something that's part of the design, or just really just a park and sitting recreation area? Just curious.
Yeah. So I would almost defer to our Parks and Rec Department. You know, we have kind of more red bubbles or possibilities where there's activation. However, we had a whole city staff workshop on this, and the concept was discussed. One thing that came up was that, it was mine or saying this was discussed with the South Threatened Neighborhood Association, maybe a decade or so ago. And while there was maybe an interest, it was also noted that a lot of the homes down there had lots, which I wasn't quite sure I totally agreed with, because there's also a lot of apartment complexes that don't have that. But another thing that was noted is that just across the river on, on, on Williams Avenue, there's a large pea patch. But that's really for the North Threatened Neighborhood. So I would just say it is in the discussion for activation. I haven't heard it at the top. Again, the dog park kind of surprised me. It was the top one there. But it's, it's in discussion. So I'll just, you know, I don't know if it shows up on this activation here. There's the pet area, but I was looking for a pea patch, for lack of a better term, is that, that's what you're referring to? Maybe we can swap out one of these pictures for a pea patch for June 6th, so we can get some public input on that, maybe.
Wonderful. I know that we're almost at time, but if, yeah, just a suggestion, as we're tossing perhaps names, I would say something of, we find a lot of the streets in terms of, we're talking about connecting. So like, vong dai in Vietnamese, connecting, noi, noi kit. So it's very much like friendship connecting. I can send you the words. But I know that we can get creative with different languages. But that's something I would like to offer as well.
We'll be the first to admit that every time I make a presentation on the Renton Connector, I have to explain why it's called the Renton Connector, because otherwise, like, what is that? Is that a Lego set? You know, so it is true. But that's, that is the title that is in the federal grant. So there is a little bit of impetus to keep that name around.
I do have just one follow-up on the lighting, and that is that we want to make sure that all those lights are baffled so that they're not shining into people's living room windows all night long.
And with the lighting we utilize nowadays, the LED lights, you can directly focus those things. So you can make sure the amount of light spillover is greatly reduced, because obviously, that'd be a concern running right down to the street.
Okay, looks like we generated some more. Go, please.
Well, in terms of creating kind of a safe space with this connector program, how much has the city looked into possible CCTV in that area and that space above those lights to provide a little bit more protection?
I would say that hasn't come up in discussion. Safety has been a big topic. How you, it is kind of an oxymoron, how you create a gathering space, but not a space where people that don't want gathering, gathering. But I'll mark that as a suggestion as we loop in the police department.
And we're still very preliminary on. So these things will obviously start to develop the plans more and more. Public safety considerations will be taken and be part of the ongoing review. And I'm sure that's something the police department will bring up.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add a plus one for the shielding on the lighting, potentially. In my experience, I, and it just, at least, or if the residents can see what it's going to look like. Because in my, I've seen where two, it is to the standards, and it is directional, but there is still some bleed over that happens. Not necessarily like blinding, but it's, it will be noticeable. So I just, I would want to make sure there's a good amount of outreach on that, so people understand. Because I, I know what you mean, is that it's focused and it's pointing, but it's still, the LEDs are very bright. So, as you know.
A lot of that will depend on which Kelvin we use as well. So a lot of that makes difference. Plus, some of it on the intersections will have to be higher and have related over to meet the ASH those standards. But the pedestrian lighting is certainly something that can be much more directed.
Any final thoughts, questions? Yes, of course.
I'm glad you pointed it out, because again, we intentionally wanted to focus on the Renton Connector, but the South Seventh Street multi-use trail there, we intend to fully illuminate to our pedestrian levels too. And I've talked to everybody that's along the north side there, which is a mix, of course, from the oncology, veterinary, to some rentals, to, you know, our homeowners on the corner there at Seventh and, and Smithers. And so I will coordinate with them about that shielding. It's all been supportive so far. And, but yeah, we're going to want to eliminate that as well. And we will work with sound transit, because the intent of that trail, sound transit, is, is funding it as a non-motorized connection between the two transit centers as we move from ours to the sound transit one. And, you know, lighting and signage to get people from the trail into the new facility. Yeah. So, yes, definitely lighting on that as well.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. This is, it's exciting.
I guess June 6th, John Cullen would want me to emphasize June 6th.
We'll all be there.